Uh, we went down and told you that Twin Eagles get around.
Or Iowa.
Yeah. It's pretty nice to look at them. They have their Halloween things set up for the kids. So you have to pump your carbine and um.
I mean, it's um.
Yeah. Well, they got a leg or? Oh, they got a leg. Hey, when you see all the kids like this, pump your carbon competition.
Big leg or?
It's probably like twenty years.
Actually, a good picture. So I got up and actually went hiking in the morning. When that was kind of steeping, just to kind of wrap her around.
No, no. Long, it's probably a hundred and fifty acre plot. Yep, and you can take a side goat and just roll around.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular council meeting of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three to order. Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilperson Kimfer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and take role. Councilperson Bradley. Councilperson Kimfer. Councilperson Ginever. Absent. Councilperson Friedmeyer. Councilperson Fisher. Councilperson Chalmberg. Councilperson Winkelman. Councilperson Massa. Absent. All right, uh, before we approve the agenda, we need to amend the agenda. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda and remove resolution six twenty twenty-three. I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam Clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed? Thank you, ma'am. I'll give you a few moments. You can look over the minutes of the last meeting. And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth and twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Uh, public comment, uh, Mrs. Rainey. Street closure for Ladies Night Event on Saturday, November fourth, twenty twenty-three, from three P M to ten P M. Uh, floor is yours. You can come up. You can talk into the mic.
Guess you don't know me.
Hey, I remember you, yeah.
Yes, uh, so Store Tanglefoot Association is hosting our annual Ladies Night Event. Um, that fastest main street will be closed from Mill Street down to Brierton. And we would like to ask the council to approve closing all the way to Truman. As to, you know, for safety reasons, obviously, we're gonna have people walk in the streets. The Crystal City businesses on that end would like to be involved. And we feel more comfortable if the street is closed, if we have people.
Okay, yeah.
Walking down that way, walking. Um, it's actually not, it's from four to nine, but just to give that buffer, um, three to ten is what we're asking.
Okay, and you have a, a sign-up sheet of the Crystal City businesses.
Yes, going around and to the majority of them. Some of them are not even gonna be open that day.
Right, no, I.
Speak to them, and then some might just stay warm and to talk to them, but everybody else is on board and, and really wants to be involved, so.
No, absolutely. I appreciate. I, I'll entertain a motion for the approval to close Bailey Road at the stoplight on November fourth from three P M to ten P M for Ladies Night Event. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Twin City Chamber of Commerce Trick or Treat spectacular Saturday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Shut down Bailey Road from stoplight to Brierton from nine A M to noon. Mr. Eisenbach. There's, no, it's a good community. Mm-hmm. It's, it's a great community event, so I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to. Perfect. All right, uh, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Uh, Mr. Goodwin. Good man, I'm sorry. You have the floor, sir.
Thanks, sir. Uh, my name's Bob Goodman with uh, VFW Post Thirty-seven, seven, seven, here in Crystal City. And uh, we're here to see if we can get approvals for a proposed, uh, twenty-two shoot. Um, during this twenty-two shoot, it'll be indoors, self-contained, and mind you, it is using a non-lethal number twelve shot shell. Uh, I did produce the evidence to the chief, uh, through our meeting earlier today. It's gonna be ran out of an eighteen-inch, uh, double-wall tube, approximately twelve-foot long with a soft backdrop. It's gonna be a single-shot twenty-two. It'll be loaded by us, by the range officers. And it'll stay in the tube at all times. Alls the shooter does is walk up and pull the trigger, lay it down beside the tube, turn around and walk away. Uh, the maximum effective range of this round is three foot. I'm shooting it at ten. So we put it in eighteen-inch tube, like I said, to contain all the pellets. They don't even, the size of those are point, uh, I believe it's point zero-nine. And there's approximately a hundred and twenty-two of them in there. For those of you that know what they are, they were used, utilized back in the day to kill mice and rats on the farm.
So is this an event that you've seen operated in other locations?
Yes, sir, I've operated them myself. I still participate in some of them here locally, just not inside the city limits. Um, they're great turnouts, they're great fundraisers. It's a good place for mom and dad to get together with family. They can do, uh, raffles that we do with our meat. Plus, it learns the kid, teaches the kids gun safety right then and there in a controlled environment. It's not loud. It doesn't disrupt anything.
And it is the goal.
And the goal of the event is a fundraiser for the VFW?
Our goal is not only a fundraiser, but to build, uh, cohesiveness with the community too, as they come out, not only with their kids, and they could get to interact with veterans, veterans get to interact with the locals. Uh, eventually, my goal is to get it to where, get organizations to approve, they can use that as a fundraiser on our controlled site.
So this is not just a one-time meet, is that what you're recording?
We was, we're looking right now to start off monthly, once a month, and if, if it turns out towards going real well and, and the, uh, uh, the city and everybody gets involved, you know, with the locals. And it asks them for more and more than we ask, maybe we do it a couple times a month. And it would probably, we'll only do it during the, probably starting in September, rolling all the way just up to like right before Easter, 'cause that's when a lot of people like to get their hands and their turkeys and their meats for that winter time.
I, um, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I did notice that we don't have a date on here if there was an approve, do you have a?
If they're approved, we would like to start next month, sir.
Um.
We have to look at our calendar.
Okay.
Due to the fact of Veterans Day and everything coming up, we've kind of got a lot of stuff, but I know we were talking to try to get it started for.
Okay.
November if approved, sir.
Okay, and, um, we don't have any ordinances on the books or anything about this. We would have to. I think we, I think that's something we should consider, but, uh, I mean, if, if we discuss it and a one-time approval, it would be a one-time approval to, it, that's, to see how it goes or something like that, and then.
I am. I'm gonna go with these two gentlemen. I think that, um, I think they're trying to do the right thing. They're trying to attract people to, uh, the ANVETS. I, I think they're trying to go, they're gonna have an indoors, correct?
Yes.
In that little annex, um, which could use the little Christmas party behind it. Um, it is a very minimal round, and if council would decide to move forward on it, your decision, I would ask that Mr. Turner and I probably meet with them and take a look at it. And make sure that everything passes the test and.
Yes, sir.
Um, go forward from there, but maybe it's a one-time approval and then you see how it goes, and if that's not the course of action you wanna take, then I understand that too.
Can we do a motion pending chief's inspection?
I like that idea to suggest that I bring the ordinance back.
Yeah.
So, so how does it, so the one thing is there's no discharge of firearms, please.
That's correct. If, uh, right now, it's, it's, that's a pneumatic or some type of air閥.
Is that the thirty-four sixty-two that you're talking about?
Yes, sir. So what we, what we don't have is anything concerning shooting matters, so we, the team and I both have looked at several, uh, communities near and far for state ordinances. There are some good ones out there that allow this, like, I think, and just kind of put in rules, regulations, distances, things like that. So if we are going to allow, which I think everybody supports the veterans, what they're trying to do, then we should have something on the books because the elves will be actually eagle, you know, every motion.
I would, I would entertain a motion to approve it with chief's approval once he goes there, and then have Jason bring in ordinance back to us next month to further on that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is you want us to have it set up and then have him come inspect it prior to, 'cause then. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I, I would like.
Purchase and everything else is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna be a, a go, but, I mean, yeah, I want chief to go out there and actually look at it and then, but we'll.
We invite you to come out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then just for clarification, like, as far as the firearms, you know, we have a city ordinance where you have a few guns, pneumatic gun, things of that nature, and in our ordinance, if it runs into other firearm stuff, we'll refer to state law. And then obviously, you have peace disturbance, things like that, and you need to know where to shoot, so there are parameters here that we have as far as the law enforcement end of it, just so you know on that. Typically, when these things happen, it takes special approval by the city council to have meat shoots or turkey shoots.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion to approve Mr. Goodman's meat shoot, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Pending approval of the chief.
Pending chief approval. All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries.
Make a motion to put meat shoots on the agenda for an ordinance proposal in the future.
Perfect. All right. I have a motion and a second to have meat shoots on next month's agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? No? All right, Jason, that'll be on the agenda next month. Perfect. All right, moving on to section three. We have our check register, bills, financial reports. If you guys can look through that, does anyone have any questions on that? Uh. Sales tax, use taxes, all pretty much came in. All that's right there in your packet. Um, legal bills for the month were a tad bit high from last month, but if you, there's itemized there and most of those are reimbursable. I mean, we have the standard, but we upfront it and then we collect, so. Anybody have any questions on those?
Use tax was almost thirty, thirty thousand dollars, is what I'm seeing.
Uh.
It's still, still kind of high.
Yeah, we're hoping for twenty-five. Consolidated use tax should have been, yep, twenty-nine, four, four, four.
Okay.
Yep, uh. So we, I think Jason, I mean, we're hoping for twenty-five, twenty-five. Right. Jason didn't budget for twenty-five. I'm, he was quite a bit lower than that, but that's what we were kind of, kind of thinking on, so. No, use tax is good. Any other questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve check register bills and financial reports.
Perfect.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Committee reports, they're in your packet. I'll give you a moment to look through them. Mr. Turner, you have anything to add to your packet information?
Um, the only thing, we, I did have to do a change to our pre, um, walkthrough audit for the Corps of Engineers on the levy. It's moved from November second to November sixth at one o'clock, uh, the matter of business contract. And we will not be doing the cemetery wall, and we put all the rain, I wanna take those blocks down and all that mud lard is on the street, so.
Right.
Gonna postpone that. But some was there today, so feeling okay, so we're still moving on.
Cemetery wall still moving on, then probably November, I mean, we got.
After, we're supposed to get after Wednesday, like, four or five days to do the rain, so I don't wanna tear that down and then it'd just be a mess.
Right, no, we gotta, weather dictates outside work, so.
Yeah, everything's good.
Perfect. Chief Bova, anything additional? I see you in the audience. I'm just wanting to, uh, call you out. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sullivan, you have the floor.
So I'd like to bring your, your attention to the, uh, MS four audit compliance, uh, document that you have. Um, it's a spreadsheet format. It probably would have been an additional to what the packet actually was.
It was sitting at your seat, this guy.
Um, so this would also coincide with what's in your packet on the agreement that everybody here signed, um, that we made with the Department of Natural Resources in relationship to that audit. Um, so each description is to the left. Um, the center portion under current status is what has been done for that item so far to this point. Uh, we had an agreed compliance date and the date that that was complied or the, the status, um, such as if it's ongoing. Uh, to give you an example of something that's changed a little bit, um, since I sent this off, uh, you go down about six or eight items, you'll see, uh, submit documentation, city pool discharge has been eliminated. Um, that's still a true statement. Um, however, that was determined because of the pool was closed, there was no water coming out of it. Um, so, you know, we knew that we weren't having any issues with discharge of, of pool water, uh, coronary pool water any, anymore. Um, as of today, the state received the documentation and photos showing that several pipes that Mr. Turner and their crew have found, um, to have been leaking. Um, we've got those closed off and sealed, so, um, that's actually gonna change just a little bit, the verbiage of the current status. Um, but it still has no visible discharge, and he's verified that, and we've sent that documentation off to the state also. Um, so if, uh, anybody has any questions about where we are with any of the action items, a lot of them are just in process because they're, they're gonna be in process for a continuing amount of time, 'cause it's ongoing, 'cause we're submitting documents to them all the time. So, um, we do now have one, uh, plan being reviewed, uh, under the new requirements. So, um, we've, we've got that back to the contractor. They're reviewing that now and getting us some, uh, stuff back to us, and we'll be proceeding forward with the new regulations.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And I'll provide one of these monthly, so you'll know where we're at.
He, he was asking, he came in and was like.
Mine's on eight and a half, or eleven by seventeen, so, yeah, so we'll, uh, I'll make sure we get, get some copies that are ready.
Great progress, and even in progress, it's a great progress from where we were.
Yes, we're moving forward.
Exactly.
Forward with all of it, so.
And all departments are chipping in on this. Like, it's a, it's a, everyone.
Yeah, big shout-out to everybody with that, yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Chief Helms, anything to add on your packet?
Just the, uh, letter recognition that's been there in my case, I'm gonna have to look at that. Uh, officer's done an outstanding job. And then I had a detective inform me yesterday that, um, they had worked at Bank Roger about a, uh, year ago in Crystal City, and they're suspect that just got sentenced the other day to fifteen years in prison, so.
Wow.
They did a job on their end.
Excellent.
And as we speak, uh, with police officer Campbell, and it's a very, very serious situation in Crystal City right now. I thank everybody, so.
Good. Well, thank you, sir. Um, that letter in your packet, uh, Officer Waskirkin, Was, Waskirkin, okay. I call her Madeline. Yeah, I just don't, yeah, so, but, uh, she did a great job, and that's one of the things, uh, she was one of the officers that's working with the school, and, uh, it, it works out good, so, thank you for that. All right, let's move on to, uh, council liaison reports. Uh, Councilperson Fisher, library and school board.
Uh, not a lot, except I did meet with some of the, uh, board members, library board members, and they had requested that they have access to, uh, posted news and updates about the library. And, uh, the mayor's newsletter and possibly on our city website, and I think those things are going to begin shortly.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Park, Councilperson Chalmberg.
I don't have anything.
All right. Councilperson Winkelman, sewage commission. Uh, Councilperson Friedmeyer's absent. Zoning appeals board, Councilperson Ginever. I don't think you have anything. Perfect. Uh, Councilperson Kimfer, levy commission. Perfect. All right. Public response. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything related to the previous meeting? All right, old business, we have none. New business, Mr. David McKinney. You may have the floor, sir.
How is everyone?
Wonderful.
I'm sure you guys are excited to talk about.
Insurance.
Right, I know nobody could sleep waiting for that. Um, speaking of small or too small, I have our exam for today. Um, there's a lot of information on there, and I try not to make it too much information, but I also try to convince it in such a way that we could make it through, okay? But I'm gonna hit the highlights, um, at this point as we walk through it. Um, the first thing I wanted to mention, you know, to deal with the renewal, um, we always mentioned and have the discussion, that right now, through the last reporting period, the employees, their utilization of in-network facilities has been at ninety-nine percent for the last reporting period. And I just mentioned that because it's vitally important, both for their pocketbooks, but also the city's pocketbooks. And I think it just shows an engagement from the employee's perspective, that they are paying attention, they're doing their best. You can't ask for any better than ninety-nine percent in network utilization from that perspective, right?
Right.
So to me, I see that as, as positive. The other thing is we're out a little bit earlier than we normally are on purpose this year. Um, things in the stop-loss insurance market in general has just been chaotic and contentious with the state of the world, the state of financial markets, the state of interest rates, and all of those things that we're all very much aware of. And so what we were trying to do and have accomplished is to get firm renewal rates locked in for one-one-twenty-four, but getting them as early as possible. So that we can hopefully lock something in and not face additional potential disruption as we move into just a volatile fourth quarter, okay? So that is why we're out a little earlier than usual. So if we start with this, um, if we're looking at the current column, which is all the way to the left, and then we're looking at the column directly to the right. Um, that is the firm renewal that is with ISU, your current stop-loss carrier. It's an A-plus rated carrier. It, Health Comp is your third-party administrator, no changes there. Health Link, out of access to, out of area to, is your current plan administrator when it comes to the network that you're leasing. So when we talk about that high utilization, that's the network that is being utilized, and that's a very pervasive network locally, so good access from the employee's perspective. And then ProCareRx is the PBM or pharmacy benefit manager that is being used. It is remaining on the same twelve-twelve contract. And there's a lot of pieces in between where you're looking at the stop-loss renewal, you're looking at the fixed cost renewal. The very bottom line, if you go to the very bottom of that column, all the way down. You're expecting about a five percent increase over where we're at currently, projecting forward with the utilization and the fixed cost increases that are in place, okay? So in my world, in this day and age, delivering a renewal that is below trend, significantly below trend, is a positive. I'd love to come in and tell you that it's going to be a decrease or no rate increases, but that isn't reality where we're at. But coming in with a renewal from that perspective, I see as very positive. Um, we went out to, and Health Comp went out to, a total of nine different, um, stop-loss carriers. That is the last page there, and I just wanted you guys to see it from a due diligence perspective. Multiple carriers responded back, and they just said, "We're not gonna submit a quote because we know we can't be competitive to where we're at with ISU's renewal." The other folks that presented, ISU, Liberty Mutual, and Rockports, their numbers are in here, but if you're following it forward, Rockport has an increase of about sixteen-point-one percent from current. And Liberty Mutual has an increase of about fifteen-point-eight percent from current versus the five percent increase from ISU. I always make the assumption that the incumbent stop-loss carrier has the most accurate data because they've been your stop-loss carrier for a while, and it gives them a little less, um, margin of error. Because they're not based on anticipated, they've actually been paying the claims, okay? Um, option three, just to point it out, we show it every year. Um, if you were to look at a twelve-fifteen contract as opposed to a twelve-twelve, um, it would be an increase of about forty thousand dollars in premium from a stop-loss perspective. There's always a tiny little bit of risk of managing the twelve-twelve contract as opposed to that three months of tail runout on the back end. But it's something that the city has managed with the twelve-twelve for many, many years, and I think that's partially because, A, you guys have a very good relationship with your employees, communication is very high, and there's just good discussion. Secondarily, we try to monitor very closely in that fourth quarter if there's anything that we think could potentially arrange that. But I always like to show that difference so that you're making a quantitative decision when you're making a decision. But typically, we have always stayed with that twelve-twelve contract, which is where that five percent increase is. Questions so far? Did I put anyone to sleep? Okay.
Close, close.
Yeah, it's close, I was gonna say.
We're, we're moving right along.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is as we look to the second page, we had also priced out not only the ISU renewal, but we have continued to do due diligence to say, just looking at the networks, the discounts, the pharmacy benefit managers. Are there other potentials to look at? We had looked at Cigna, but Cigna doesn't allow their networks to be separated, so if you do one, you have to do both. Which would be the provider network, the pharmacy benefit network. Long story short, they came back in, their fees were higher from a stop-loss perspective. Their rates for a per employee per month were a little bit higher. They ended up almost identical from the rates at the bottom, and they said, based on previous utilization, there was a potential of, you know, twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars of exposure coming back to the city. Based on the previous use exposure. When discussing that, that to me seems like there's some potential positives, but there's also po, potential losses. Because that is making the assumption that the exact same claims play out in the exact same way, and that very rarely happens in my world. But I think it, it goes to legitimize the data that's been put in place by ISU, and also just frankly, that we're, we're trying to kick, um, every stone in looking at what might be possible. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions on that? Uh, I mean, insurance, the increase of five percent is, uh, pretty good. So I appreciate your diligence on all of these carriers that was, went through and looked into, so thank you.
You got it.
Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of our medical insurance renewal for the upcoming year. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Ordin, thank you, sir.
Appreciate, we'll get with you, and I'll just get with Jason to finalize what we need to finalize.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. All right, I'll entertain a motion to read bill nineteen twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only, twenty twenty-three slash twenty-four union contract. title only, twenty-twenty-three slash twenty-four salary contract, and ordinance establishing rules, regulations, salaries, and hourly rates of pay, emergency pay, and sick leave for certain employees of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, and repealing prior ordinances in which are in direct conflict with this ordinance and any amendments thereto.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three.
A motion's been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading by title only. Any discussion?
I have a question for Jason, uh, on page, page three here about the employees assigned duties and higher paying jobs, shall we pay them the higher rate of pay?
So when, when we have a supervisor out and they're like one of the former on vacation, they move up into that rate of pay, which has been in the contract for some time.
It reads fine to the first day in the highest paying job.
I think it was before, it was after three days.
Okay.
After three days in the position, then they got the pay then. This is just being the first day they're in that position.
If we, yeah. All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Yep.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three on second and final read.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading by title only, twenty-twenty-three slash twenty-four salary contract, and ordinance establishing rules, regulating salaries, vacations, paid holidays, overtime pay, and other benefits for certain salaries, employees within the city of Crystal City, Missouri, repealing any other ordinances and setting the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve bill nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three on second and final read.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, I will poll, motion carries, and I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Ginevra? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Lincoln? Bill number nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three now becomes ordinance nineteen-twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to rebuild nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading by title only. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that bill? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading by title only, twenty-twenty-three slash twenty-two-four salary contract, and ordinance establishing rules, regulating salaries, vacations, paid holidays, overtime pay, and other benefits for certain salary employees within the city of Crystal City, Missouri, repealing any other ordinances and setting the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on second and final read.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two-four salary contract, and ordinance establishing rules, regulating salaries, vacations, paid holidays, overtime pay, and other benefits for certain salary employees within the city of Crystal City, Missouri, repealing any other ordinances and setting the effective date of this ordinance.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on second and final read.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Ginevra? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Lincoln? Bill number nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three now becomes ordinance nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three, is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on second and final read.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading by title only, and ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into the revised intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crystal City, Missouri, and Jefferson County, Missouri, for the construction of roadways and stormwater improvements, and authorizing the city administrator or his designate to take all actions necessary to implement the revised agreement.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its first read.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its first reading by title only. Any discussion?
Specifically to the project?
So this is for, what we added is this ordinance mirrors what the county passed. This includes the stormwater portion that we didn't have in the original agreement, so it's the section, we're talking about almost five million dollars of the stormwater work, so we're wrapping that into the work of the county.
And it's work on the road that's out from the Hardy, or is it all, it's just that?
This is all, this is the entire project that we're reviewing.
Okay, okay.
All the public funds.
Right, but it's not citywide, this is specific to that project?
This is specific to the agreement with the county for the infrastructure related to Hardy.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on second and final read.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only, and ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into the revised intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crystal City, Missouri, and Jefferson County, Missouri, for the construction of roadways and stormwater improvements, and authorizing the city administrator or his designate to take all actions necessary to implement the revised agreement.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on second and final read.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Ginevra? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Lincoln? Bill number nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three now becomes ordinance nineteen-twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please read resolution number five dash twenty-twenty-three?
A resolution authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a twenty-four-month intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for use of spectometry products under the county, under the county's license agreement.
I'll entertain a motion to accept resolution five dash twenty-twenty-three. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What exactly is spectometry, or what do?
So we've had this program, uh, for as long as I can remember, and it's mostly used by the building department, so they can log on, they can go to your property, for example, measure it, measure your house without physically going to the site, and a lot of other stuff. Mostly used in the building department, so we kind of just pay you back on their license.
Sounds pretty cool.
Yeah, it saves some time and just a reassurance. All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, onto city administrator report. You have a couple of, uh, things, Jason, you have the floor. You have a couple of things you want to discuss?
So we have a couple of items that were in the budget that I'm just asking for approval to move forward with. Uh, the first one being in the budget but not in the budget. We budgeted, I think, thirty thousand dollars for, to repair, was it one thousand fifty? Um, and the price raised on that, uh, so we found a used, uh, one ton that we would get better use out of. Um, so we had budgeted thirty thousand, we sold three vehicles in, um, this year out of our fleet, uh, for having twenty-one thousand, uh, with those three vehicles, so we'd like to put that together and buy this, uh, used dump truck that we found it. That's the score of Ruth or Ford. So the money's there, kind of moving in different ways.
And you used some vehicles that we have images of?
Yes. Yep. It's very clean, our mechanic had it here all day Friday, had it on the lift, it didn't look, it's already wired for a salt spot and clutter, but it didn't look like it had been used for that. There was no rust on the frame, typically if you don't wash those things down, they start rusting pretty good. He had it all day, uh, Friday, went through it, and was really happy with the condition it's in. A new one of these is over a hundred thousand, fully outfitted, we can't find them.
And this one's fifty thousand dollars, and it's a twenty-twenty?
It's a twenty, yes. It was actually listed for fifty-nine-nine, and it came off almost ten thousand dollars. They've had it on their lot for.
And they sold this vehicle to the owner? The guy walked during code for a landscaping company, decided not to still do what he thought, so they just sold it back to him.
Sorry. Our mechanic looked at it, recommended it. Um, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the F three-fifty from Ruth or Ford. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Eisenbach?
The other, um, thing to discuss is the two Ford Explorers. We did budget for these. We've had, this is our second year in a row now that we can't find them anywhere, or they cancel our order, so the two that we ordered in December for this budget year, we have no idea if we're gonna get them again. It's not looking real good. So using my listserv and talking to the other, a couple of other city administrators, I found a place in Boston that has them on lot, they're one of Ford's top ten fleet, uh, companies, so they have, I guess it's kind of our secret, not anymore, but, uh, so, um, we're looking for permission to go get these two vehicles. These were budgeted for, they're a little bit higher than what we budgeted, I think we budgeted around a hundred thousand for these two vehicles. There is some ways that we may be able to save some money if we, if we go get them ourselves, if we have them striped here versus painted there, so if you guys give the, a go ahead to get them, then we'll kind of start working with them to see what works out best, either have them shipped or go get them painted there, painted here. So that's kind of what we have with those vehicles.
If we're getting these two, I guess we're getting rented to it? Or have we already done that?
Uh, probably not. I think our perception right now is we can't keep what we have because vehicles are so hard to get, that right now we can't.
I got my question in, if you're gonna keep what you got and you're gonna use it, why do we need two more?
So here, here's where we're at, we didn't get any last year. So we have, we found these two out of state, we still have the two on order. Now, if they come in, it'll be kind of up to the council if we want to get those two or if we want to let them go. They won't have a problem letting them go, we have a problem getting them right now across the state, because the people that I've talked to, other city managers, have flown to Boston and got these, because their Explorers are hard to get.
And then also, to answer your question a little bit, was, they're wearing out, our vehicles are wearing out. We got into, quite a few years back, we got into a program where we didn't wear everything down at one time, we'd get behind the eight wall, we started identifying what vehicles needed to be moved out before we ordered to stay on top of it. So now, like Jason said, over the last couple of years, you know, it's been stagnant, and now it's really stagnant, everybody's fighting this problem, finding police cars, so, you know, we have some that are wearing out, so before we go flat-footed, we're trying to get a couple, get back on our feet.
And Jason, didn't you say you sold two police vehicles for twenty thousand dollars too?
No, we sold, uh.
Oh, city trucks? City trucks, okay.
A van, a truck, and then a trash, trash truck.
Oh, okay.
The police vehicles, I mean, but the strike's still going on too, it doesn't seem like they're gonna be easier to come by on that, so.
I'll be surprised if we get the ones we ordered. But if they come in, we'll see what time of year it is and what it looks like, if we can get them, then get them.
No, I'm saying, I think we're creating them in, getting rid of them too early.
And the last one, okay.
These newer vehicles, which put a whole lot more miles on them, what we're doing.
And the fire department likes when we give them some, so I'm sure cheap over would, if we get, if we can get rid of an Explorer. So we'll, we evaluate when we get them.
And this says hybrid, is that, so it's a gas-electric hybrid?
It is.
Okay. Do we get a break on that because, like, a federal tax break? If it's a, if it's a new, if it's a new vehicle, I think we do.
I can imagine that.
But I don't know if it, yeah, I think, I don't think buying it from out of state makes a difference. I think it's a federal. Yeah, but then, but, but. Yeah.
We might, I mean, they'll look into it.
Right, and reliable vehicle.
Um, then one other thing, just to, uh, things, sometimes things change too, like I didn't even mention it tonight, but we just had a guy that tried it out and was accepted to a high-level position as a SWAT member with our county SWAT team, so part of that agreement, excuse me, that agreement is, is he has to have a certain vehicle available to him in order to respond to these things, but the offfall is to our city is tenfold of what we're sending him out to do, what we're getting in response to the things that we could get, so just to kind of touch on that too, and a couple of our cars now for sure are over ten years old in our fleet, so things are starting to go a little bit flat, and our needs have changed a little bit, so we're just trying to stay on top of it.
I think we would, you know, reevaluate where we're at and probably possibly get rid of them if we have a reassurance that we could buy some more next year to keep, keep our fleet reliable. Um, just how it is right now, it's a lot of uncertainty on that, so.
When was the last time we purchased?
December of twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Or twenty, twenty?
Twenty.
It's been, we didn't get any last year.
Right, I remember.
Typically, we get them in October, so it'd been two Octobers ago. We used to be able to order them right around April and get them in October.
And then, and then at one point, we didn't do that because we evaluate the fleet.
Yeah, you reported that, so we only bought one.
We could keep some a little bit, so we did evaluate that, and then you got into the issue of COVID, et cetera, and then things just started going upside down in the car world, so.
Don't we just purchase one?
We did in twenty-twenty, I believe we just purchased.
Instead of the two?
And we do have, our mechanic does routine maintenance, so they are stretching out as long as we can get them, so. If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the two Ford Explorers.
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Bradley? Thank you, sir. All right. You guys have any other questions for Mr. Eisenbach on his report? All right. Yeah, go with.
Or I could do my report, but this was in the mailbox about the municipal league, county municipal meeting that was the seventeenth October, do we know if anybody, did you make that visit or?
I did not, the mayor did not, he went to the school, the school board meeting that night.
Is this something that, uh?
So, uh, the way I understand it, uh, former councilman Becker, he used to meet quite a bit with other community, uh, community council people, and I think they wanted to kind of grow it from there, uh, starting with the mayor and city administrators, um, uh, and now I have breakfast, uh, Wednesday with all the city administrators and the counties, so I'll find out more on Wednesday, keep you guys updated. They, when I first started this, ten or twelve years ago, we used to have it every time, and it just kind of went out, but I think we're starting to kind of ramp it up.
Thank you.
Uh, mayor's report. Um, I want to personally thank Mrs. Shilly and the audience for the school board and the school board for, uh, approving that SRO from that.
approving that SRO from that. Uh, that was a lot of work, the council. Uh, I appreciate it and, uh, it's good for the community, it's good for school. And, uh, I've said it before, but the school reflects on the city and the city reflects on the school. And, uh, we make a great team and Miss Shilly, it's amazing, so thank you for that. Uh, other than that, we have Halloween coming up. We got a trunk or treat at school coming up on this Monday. There's going to be a lot of kiddos running around, uh, be careful on that. Uh, the fire department's always done a great job, uh, at the firehouse with the kids coming up. So I look forward to that. I'll be hanging out there for a little bit. And, um, I just appreciate what the city's done. Everybody's firing on all cylinders, so it's, it's running smooth and, uh, we see that. Um, so I'll go around the table for round table. Councilperson Bradley.
Mr. Jack, one thing I gotta say, I've seen pictures on Facebook of the new scout house. What you've done with it, turning it around, looked awesome and posed, I'm saying, I have not been in yet, but I'm like, you did a very good job on it. Whoever was involved.
Yeah, Historical Society Center, really good job. Mr. Kemper? Mr. Genever?
Um, well, I'd like to take credit for all those nice things that happened there, but I... Clayton Maury did most of the work. He was a real workhouse, workhorse, so I, I'd like to give him credit, at least most of the credit for that. On that same vein though, um, I know Mr. Cook is here tonight and, and he actually came by one time and had a nice conversation with him. Uh, some of the other things we're doing is we're having radio programs once a week, the second Thursday of every month at ten thirty on KJFF. Uh, our first one was about the Crystal City Fairgrounds, which used to be right past Third Street. Uh, Mississippi Avenue stopped at Third Street in nineteen fifteen, or nineteen seventeen, about that, that time. And beyond that, there was a fairgrounds that covered about two city blocks, north and south, and two city blocks, east and west. And that whole thing turned out to be kind of fascinating and, and we did a whole program on that and posted a lot of things about it. And, and how that ties to Mr. Cook is he came by and he said, uh, well, there used to be a bandstand on, uh, Mississippi and we've done some more research and, and everything that you told me pans out. It's right in that area that you were talking about, so, so we're going to talk about that. Yeah, we're going to talk about, well, yeah, he, he remembers it. They was torn down in nineteen sixty-three, so, um, but anyway, we're going to do a program about that next time. Um, Jason, I just looked up the tax credit thing on that thing. We don't pay federal tax on anything, right? So that's, yeah, it's, I don't think we can claim those credits. Um, what else? Um, I, I think, oh, we had, um, one more thing about the Historical Society. We had a whole bunch of Crystal City High, uh, reunions happening over the weekend. And the classes seventy-eight and eighty-three, that would be, uh, the forty and forty-five year reunions of Crystal City High School that came by and, and took pictures inside of the, uh, uh, museum there. So that was, that was a good time, good time to hit by all. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fisher?
Uh, I don't have anything except I'm old enough that I remember the old bandstand.
Perfect.
Well, that says something, Rick, so...
All right. Mrs. Schomburg?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Winkelman? All right. Mr. Cook? Would you please step up to the podium, please? Before we adjourn, we got to, I want to personally thank you. You were on a plane not too long ago, so, uh, we got some stuff.
Well, we're all here. Mr. Cook, I met Mr. Cook several, several years ago when I moved into Crystal City. And, uh, I'm a man, moved into him and, uh, it's great. Uh, getting to know him has been an honor. And what's interesting is, uh, when I talked to him at the ball game and when I spoke to him around town and everything, I, I didn't take him for granted because I knew his history and he went to Papa Bluff, which is where I'm from, and he thought, and we knew somebody. One of his old friends was actually my next door neighbor and, um, but I didn't really understand what a great man I spoke into. And, uh, it's an honor for me to be able to present you the stuff that we have. Because you talked to me like I was your friend, I never knew you, and, uh, how you coached up those girls and the reason that you're getting inducted into the, uh, Hall of Fame is, uh, it just speaks volumes. And the amount of time that you spend at the city, at the pool. Uh, we got a couple of things for you here. I'm going to read them out loud. I know we got a couple of members of, uh, the other governmental entities. And, uh, it's not enough for what you've done, but it's the best we can do and what we got. So let me start this off real quick. As a city proclamation, whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Crystal City wish to publicly acknowledge and congratulate Coach Dick Cook on being inducted into the twenty twenty-three Missouri Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas Coach Dick Cook graduated from Crystal City in nineteen fifty-six and the University of Missouri in nineteen sixty. And whereas Coach Dick Cook started his coaching career at Papa Love High School, where he helped to coach their start AAU track and field program. And whereas Coach Dick Cook coached track and field at the high school level for forty-nine years, including thirty-four years at Crystal City High School. And whereas the sport meant so much to him that he started an AAU program, the Jefferson County Jets Track Club, in nineteen seventy. The club went on to produce athletes who competed in the Big Eight Conference with one reaching the Olympics. And whereas Coach Dick Cook saw combined sixteen state championships by individuals and relay teams, and his nineteen eighty-four to nineteen eighty-nine girls' teams all won state championships in class two. And whereas Dick Cook, a lifelong Crystal City resident, represented excellence, selflessness and sportsmanship in Crystal City athletics. And whereas Dick Cook dedicated many years to the city of Crystal City Municipal Pool as the director and serves on the city council. And whereas Coach Dick Cook was inducted into the Crystal City High School Hall of Fame and the Missouri State High School Track and Field Hall of Fame. And whereas Coach Dick Cook will be recognized and enshrined in the ceremony on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Now, now therefore be it proclaimed that Coach Dick Cook is hereby recognized and honored by the city council and mayor and the city of Crystal City, Missouri, and due by here proclaiming November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as Coach Dick Cook Day. In Crystal City, Missouri, we urge everyone to join in the celebration. So that was our proclamation and I'm like, well, let's, and I knew it, but it's like, well, let's name a road after him. He already has a road, he's had it. Let's have, I see proclamations at school that he's gotten. Um, we, I can't underste- this is Mr. Crystal City as a whole. Um, he's always done right by our city. And, uh, if the youth can just look at a leader and follow Mr. Cook, we'll all be in a better place. So what we have, honoring Coach Dick Cook, Crystal City High School Track and Field Coach, induction into the twenty twenty-three Missouri Sports Hall of Fame. Here's a key to Crystal City.
I look forward to our basketball games together on the steps. I won't sit in your chair anytime soon. And, uh, what I look forward to and I appreciate, I do. So we got a couple more?
I wish I could tell you how much Crystal City has meant to me in my eighty-five years. But, uh, I lived at five-ten Mississippi Avenue. And across Strawberry Alley was the Crystal Football Field, where I just, uh, spent so much time there just watching games. I didn't have enough money sometimes to pay, but I'd sneak around there on railroad tracks and meet all those guys that got off of PPG early and came down to the game too. It, uh, it just thrills me that everyone came here tonight. And, well, anyway, it does. Thank you.
Absolutely. We got a couple more. We got a loose one more, sir. All right. This is a proclamation from our county executive, Jefferson County, Missouri. The Jefferson County, Missouri executive would like to pause and recognize Coach Dick Cook on his induction into the twenty twenty-three Missouri Sports Hall of Fame on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas Coach Dick Cook track, coached track and field for forty-nine years, thirty-four of those at Crystal City, the others at Herkylanium, Papa Bluff and the University of Missouri. Coach Cook led the girls' team to consecutive state championships from eighty-four to eighty-nine. Crystal City, Coach Cook saw combined sixteen state championships by individual and relay team races, including producing athletes that competed in the Big Ten and Olympics. Coach Cook graduated from Crystal City, started his coaching career at Papa Bluff, where he helped their, the coach there start the AAU team. Dick Cook is the husband to Mary Ellen Cook Nos, Cook and father to Richard, Mary Beth, Jill, Amy Jo. And whereas the county executive is pleased to dedicate a day to honor Coach Dick Cook in his many years of dedicated service to the wonderful athletes and residents of Jefferson County, Missouri. And therefore be it resolved, the Jefferson County, Missouri executive is hereby honored to proclaim October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as Coach Dick Cook Day in Jefferson County, Missouri. We got some more.
Uh, state representative, Mr. Waller? Do you have the floor, sir?
I'm going to hand these... Well, Coach, he never was my coach. Yeah. Because I went to the rival school Festus, but it was back in the day, Festus and Crystal had some of the best, uh, rivalry games in basketball and just, it was so much fun. I've done probably two or three, I was counting this up today, I've probably done two or three hundred of these in my career is in, in politics. But this one's special. I have no speech. Usually I have a speech, some notes. And I'm not going to read the proclamation because it pretty much says everything that everybody else has said in the proclamation. What I want to focus on is Dick Cook, the man. And the, the way you've imparted yourself all these years as far as not just Mr. Crystal City, but to your family, and you've mentored probably thousands upon thousands. There'll be people, we always remember our coaches when we play sports or even people that don't sports. They'll remember Coach Holm and Coach Cook. It doesn't matter. You can put their last name, it doesn't really matter. And so, you know, thank you to your family for sharing your father with all these athletes, these people you have. If you would have won one state championship, eight state championships or none, but you would have impacted kids on a daily basis, that would have been, I think that would have meant more to you than anything, is the impact that you have. And in your eighties, you still impact. And everybody knows Coach Cook. You are Mr. Crystal City. You'll always be Mr. Crystal City. And for me to be able to present a resolution to you is the biggest honor of probably anything I've ever done in politics because I've known you, your wife sold my first house. I don't see her here, but she sold my first house. Of course, Rich, I know not all the children are here. I think Mary Beth's in Michigan or wherever she lives. But, uh, I know three of your kids are here. I know they're proud of you. You're, I know you've been a great father and a great husband, but, you know, you're an even better man. Uh, forget the Coach part, Dick Cook, the man, is just as much as Dick Cook, the person. So again, it's an honor to present you a resolution from the state of Missouri. Today is Dick Cook Day in Jefferson City.
All right, we got one more. Congressman Jason Smith's office? I know. Mrs. Hickman?
I don't have to stand too much longer. Dick just arrived from Washington today, I will tell you. Um, the congressman is, is still there taking care of trying to get us the speaker. But, um, he sends his best wishes to you and is very, is very proud. I too will not read everything in here, but I will tell you, um, this is a congressional record. And so in the future, when anyone wants to know how you were honored for this achievement, they can go Google Dick Cook, comma, Crystal City, Missouri, and they'll always be able to find this in the congressional record of the United States. So let me read the final paragraph. No one could be prouder of his achievements than his wife, Mary Ellen, his son, Richard, and daughters, Mary Beth, Jill and Amy Jo. I congratulate Coach Cook on his induction into the Missouri Sports Hall of Fame this year, and I am pleased to share his accomplishments today before the United States House of Representatives. Congratulations, sir. What an honor it is to meet you. You're popular.
All righty. Well, thank you very much, Coach Cook. We are going to, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and we have some refreshments and stuff and visit. And I know you've had a long day, but do you have any other things you'd like to add or...
Well, I, I, one other thing. I just left, there's two great places I love. I just left Disney World and Sport.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye. We are now adjourned. Let's, uh, go out there and have some refreshments and celebrate Coach Cook.
Stand here, Fabby. Yeah. Amy, move in. Hold your key better. There you go.
How was, how was Disney World?
Oh, great.
You had a great time, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll trade you. Hand, hand you that one and I'll take that one. Thank you, sir. What's your name?
Glory, my life.